My goodness, I did not know you were such a gifted author.
Awesome.
Really impressive, and it's very gripping, your story. So I encourage all of you to pick up her... Did you bring some?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so she, uh... They ran at the table in the hallway, maybe afterwards at a break or something, or after the event's over today. If you'd like to buy a copy, or if you own a copy and wanted to have it signed by her, she's willing to do that. But, uh, her story from Romania is pretty gripping. I mean, all of us, well, not all of us, many of us, I think, might say that we take our freedom for granted because we've never been in an oppressive area. And then there's people who've lived under that kind of oppressive regime. But in her case, not only did she live there, but they actually get chosen, marked to be murdered, to be assassinated because of all the work that she did to help, uh, to help people become free. It's quite a story, so I encourage you all to maybe pick up that book and hear some more about it, so. Alright, so the next side of the business is confirmation of SREC committee approvals. So let me share some things with you for a second, if I could, alright? One of the things I focus on nearly every day, I've been the state, you're the state chairman for seventeen months. I've given probably about a hundred and forty-five speeches. And what I tell people in these speeches many times, as I did last time, spoke to about a hundred and fifty people out of Lake Belton, I think I mentioned that in many meetings, is, you know, the Democrats haven't won a statewide office since nineteen ninety-four. Greg Abbott annihilated Wendy Davis by twenty points. Life is great in Texas, right? We are, as I describe it, kinda like, as I do in these meetings, we're fat, nothing happy, we're in this car, we are hauling, and we're having the biggest party because, you know, battleground Texas came down here, which of course was Obama's campaign team in twenty-twelve, tried to flip the state. And I talked about, why do they do that? Because without Texas, I mentioned it in another room, without Texas, a Republican cannot win the White House. This is ground zero for the fight to keep, uh, the opportunity to have a Republican president. And so we think everything is great, and it is right now, but this is twenty-sixteen. You want to know what happens in twenty-nineteen? The boney age population of Texas becomes majority-minority. And the minority communities at this time are overwhelmingly aligned with the Democrats. That's a fact. And I have talked about when I ran in front of this body of being your chairman in March of fifteen, I talked about that. And I've never stopped talking about it, we continue. Every week we talk about engagement, engagement, engagement. We have this massive victory plan that you'll hear more about today, you'll meet with the staff of victory. That Ash Wright, our director, is going to be there, Emery, uh, Emery Burwell is the deputy executive director because she couldn't stay busy with doing my stuff, and Amy's helping her, she helped me there for that too. And so what we're doing is we are focusing and focusing on engagement. But what we, to win this thing in twenty-nineteen and begin to move this thing over, let me tell you, just kind of taking a little stroll down memory lane here, if I could. There was a time when the party was very, very powerful, our party, it was very relevant. And then it's kinda like, we kinda went out in the nineties and we kinda began to drift into the wilderness. And things started not working quite so well. And into two thousand and two thousand, as it continued, it got really bad. By twenty-ten, as you, many of you know, the party was basically bankrupt, wasn't in bankruptcy, but it was bankrupt. The, the debt obligation was like eight-hundred thousand dollars, had very little assets. I'm not trying to make people feel bad, I'm gonna tell you, what was alarming to me, I was on the SREC, I was in one of your chairs from oh-two to oh-six. And this thing continued to fall apart, and then when I was talking with people, donors and stuff, and what became obvious to me is that the Republican team, if you want to call it that, there's organizations around the state of Texas that are Republican-leaning, tell RART, there's several of them, many of them you've heard about, uh, but they began to work around this party. Everything began, became a workaround. And some people would, you know, SREC when I was on there, they'd be frustrated, said it's not right, that I worked in this party, I worked in this party. But you can't take a baseball bat to people and say, you will work through us. They've worked through this party because they see that there's a benefit and it's worthwhile to use us as we go forward. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? And so it was concerning to me that this workaround was taking place in the party I believe was becoming more and more irrelevant. And I love this party, ladies and gentlemen, I love this party, I have been involved in leadership in this party since, for thirty years now. I got started in, you, many of you know, nineteen eighty-six, I got started in Wasilla, Alaska, as a chairman. And I was on the State Central Committee, and I love this party, and I believe that it's this party that enables the grassroots to have a voice in the process. Because it's real easy for people writing checks, just to say, we're not going to work through the party, we're just going to write checks, we're going to get Republicans elected. And where is the voice of the grassroots when that happens? Because this is, it's up to us. Now, in twenty-nineteen, this particular situation that's about to occur, we are uniquely positioned to make a difference. I have said that to statewide elected officials, I've said it to groups, I've said it over and over again. Chairman of the Ministry before me talked about engagement and how the demographics were changing. Well, twenty-nineteen, it's, becomes a crash for us. If we don't fix this situation, what's going to happen is we will begin to lose statewide races. And I'm not going to tell you we're going to lose the governor's race, not going to lose the US Senate race. Why, why would that be the case? Because they will always have the money they need to get elected. Because if you think about, Greg Abbott got like forty-four percent of the Hispanic vote, which is about, I think the Hispanic community's thirty-eight percent of Texas, and growing, obviously. The white population's declining and the other populations are increasing. John Cornyn got over fifty percent. Well, how did they do that? They took a Hispanic who is a, uh, several, millions of them obviously, Hispanics that see themselves as Democrats and convinced them, for whatever reason, because they liked Greg Abbott, they liked his wife, who's spectacular, his mother-in-law, and they voted for Greg. But what happens when they cast that ballot? They come back and they're still a Democrat. And they don't have the affinity for the Republican Party and Republican ticket all the way down ballot. They have the affinity, someone has convinced them to cross over. But what do we know about minority communities? And I know there's some communities that are minority members of this committee, which is incredible, I wish there's even more, there needs to be more. Because I think our party has got to look like Texas. That is how we survive in the future. But what do we know about minority communities? They are very, very conservative. There's two parties in the state, in the country, there's the liberal party, the Democrats, there's the conservative party that's the Republicans. And I have said this in speeches around the state, every conservative in Texas should be a Republican because we're the Republican, because we're the conservative party. And every Republican needs to feel comfortable in their party. That is essential. And the only way the minority communities who are part of the Democrat coalition at this point come across is we engage them. We can sit here and say, oh, you ought to be over here, but they're not, we're going to go to them. We're going to engage, we have engagement directors for, I don't know, RW Bright, many of you know him, he's incredible in the black community, we have a new Asian director, you'll meet him today, we have a new Hispanic director, because a lot of these people have taken promotions other places. But we, I, I had this, probably one of the most incredible experiences of my seventeen months as your chairman on Thursday. And what I got to do is go with RW Bright into the fifth ward in Houston. For those of you that are not familiar with Houston, um, when I, we arrived, we go up, and Bright turned to me and says, well, chairman, you're now, you're now on the hood. And we thought, JT says, no, try. And so I went and spoke to about fifteen black pastors that were in this room. And when I began to speak, they, Bray introduced me, and he said, this has never happened before, that a state Republican chairman would come into the hood and talk to us. And when I began to speak, I had guys, these pastors, like this. Like, who do you think you are? I had one guy like this, and he just stood up. And as I began to share my heart, as a man of faith, and it's by our faith that we connect with those communities, I believe, that is, it's not because we wave a flag and say, hey, we're conservative, or we're Republicans. We connect with them because of our hearts and our faith. I hope I can say this without breaking down because it was so emotional for me. By the time it was over, two hours later, there were brotherly hugs, they said, thank you. You know what, we've heard something today we never thought was possible. And I told them, the Democratic Party has abandoned you, they have taken you for granted, they have given you nothing in return, and I said, we will fight for you. We will fight for you, we will be here, we will engage, we are here for Dallas. Now, Seven Broden, I just told him part of that story a minute ago, he says, he said, Pat, uh, he says, chairman, you come to Dallas, I'll take you to the hood anytime you need to. And we were getting, I'm going to take him up on that. Because what you may not know about my background, I was raised very poor by a single mom. And I told these pastors, I said, the thing is, when you're raised poor, you never forget what it's like to be poor. And I'm actually more comfortable in a Walmart than I am in a Deloitte. And I'm not saying as anyone at Deloitte, but that's because of my background, okay? So why do I tell you this story? Because for us to go to that next level and to make this work, I need you, SREC, to be the most efficient, the most powerful committee you can be, without question. We need to be firing on every cylinder, and we're in the middle of a year that is incredibly, incredibly difficult. Y'all know that, you've heard the media reports, you've seen the challenges, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? Well, we have a plan, and we got to hold together as a team. Some of my observations from the past, when I, I'll tell you, you heard I was on the SREC in oh-two, oh-six. When I was on the SREC, everybody served on one committee, and nobody got to express a preference. I never, I never said I might be on this committee, that committee, I just got put on a committee. Now, I'm not saying that we don't, we shouldn't do what we're doing, we should. But I know that there's been some frustration in this room, and I want to, I want you to know, I hear that. I hear it, I understand people are upset, I think some people felt, there's some of the various reasons why this was done this way. Can I just dispel that for y'all? There's sixty-two members, there's sixty-four voting members, obviously, because Amy and I have voted. But there's sixty-two members in this committee, there's nine committees, there's five, um, there's five standing, there's actually six county officials, which will decide at the September meeting, who's going to serve on that. We get five standing committees, and then we have grassroots, volunteerism, new leaders on the rise, and legislative, that's a new committee, in response to the rule change that was made at the convention to focus on those five legislative priorities. I don't think there's just going to be five, I went off the resolutions committee, says, we want to add to that. But the convention spoke, we said there's five. So I had to make a decision. It seemed to be before that members were put on two and three committees, and everybody was exhausted. And what would happen, instead of having a really productive, powerful committee functioning, people would, they were so tired, they would just show up at the meetings on Friday, the committee meetings, the dawn of the anniversary, committee meetings on Friday before the Saturday meeting. And they would just show up, and they would show up to the meeting, and they would talk about stuff. But there wasn't, in some cases, I know there's exceptions to that. CRC is a great example, where Steve Atwood, I'm back here. I mean, some people think that CRC, all they do is they meet and they hand out money. Let me tell you, this guy, taking a task over that comment, because he sees it as an ongoing committee that never stops, you're either, you're either distributing money, or you're raising money, but hopefully you're raising money while you're distributing money, right, chairman?
That's right.
We have more envelopes, too.
More envelopes, right. But the energy and effort, the more committees that I put you guys on, the less energy and effort you have to help them, the committee you're assigned to. So what we did is we distributed, had Cassie hand out, y'all know this, at the organization meeting, hand out, was, give us your three preferences, I talked to her about it this morning. How was that done? Rank your preferences, one, two, and three. Some people, I guess, may have misunderstood, thought it was, you'd be on multiple committees, pick one out of this group, one out of this group, but it was never intended to be that way, and that, I'm sorry for the misunderstanding there, because the intent was, give us your top three picks, and I'll do everything I can as your state chairman to try and honor that. And we have done that. But if you take sixty-two and you divide it by nine, you get about seven, right? Some committee, in the case of New Leaders on the Rise, it's a task force, which, by the way, where's Toni Yen? She's in the other room.
She's on Zoom.
On Zoom, so, okay, so she'll be in, y'all know Toni Yen, of course, National Geographic. But one of the most powerful committees on this SREC is the New Leaders on the Rise. Will's on there, uh, no, he's not, he got off, right, because he's got other things he's got to do that I've asked him to do. But, uh, but the new ground that we're taking in minority communities is coming from that committee. When they first went to El Paso, they had fifteen or twenty people, they sat down and they kind of did this organization meeting. The next night she came back to do a training, it was two hundred people in El Paso for a training session at a Republican meeting. They're into Del Rio now, they've been helping in Beaumont, Beaumont's Wealth Security, got a great chairman there, and all that's been getting together. So I could put you guys on two or three, I could put you on nine committees. But I don't think it's very productive, I don't know that that's helpful. And the other thing, let me tell you a couple of things that I want you to be aware of. There's, obviously, out of nine committees, there's some of them that are a little more popular than others, right? Twenty-six of you put down rules as one of your choices. Thirty-three put down resolutions. That is massive. And then I've heard some people, I'm going to say, well, why did you cut the committee back? Why, why, it's below the size, why didn't you cut? According to the rules, every committee has five members or more. Now, I realize that in the past, some of the committees were larger. If I have sixty-two people and I have nine committees, that's about seven people. And someone could say, well, some, well, I don't think that, that, that committee's very important. Let me tell you, all these committees are important, if we, if they're not important, you know, let's not have them, right? Every one of these committees is critical. I will grant you that some of them are more popular than others. In response to what the rules committee, what the convention did in the rules, or, I'm sorry, I guess it was sue, bear with me, again, I'll be an advocate, I don't know if it's sue the rules or sue the resolutions committee, but walked away with five legislative priorities that the convention made a huge statement. And the thinking, and I was talking, conversing with others, other leaders in this, in this group, how do we best manage that? So the thinking was, let's start a legislative committee. Now, we might call that legislative review, I don't know, but I've asked Amy to chair legislative, is it legislative review or legislative? What do you want to call it? What do you want to call it?
I'm excited.
I don't care, not about the title. In, in a few minutes, you're going to have the opportunity to hear from each one of these chairs of these committees, they're going to come up and talk about their vision of where they're going. Jay Pencino is going to do volunteerism. Some people think, oh, well, the only thing that volunteerism does is, all they do is do the volunteer event. It's much bigger than that. We have a vision to increase volunteer activities throughout the state of Texas. If you're at the state, well, you must be at the state convention because you got elected to the SREC. But Amy had a video that showed the different things that we did for the first time ever in March, we had a volunteer day. But there's so many more things that we want to do, we want to do it, especially minority communities, to demonstrate that we care, and that we're there for them, and we will be there to stand with them. That's going to come through volunteerism. Grassroots vote, huge, huge. I mean, every one of these committees is incredibly important, and granted, they're not as popular. So what did we do, what did I do as your chairman on legislative? We didn't, I didn't send out another email, maybe I should have, I'm sorry, but I assumed that the people that put down resolutions as one of their choices, that that was who we should consider for legislative, because it's kind of connected, right, y'all agree? It's similar, I mean, there's a pretty big, so it's like, well, we'll just pull off that same pool. The other thing is, whenever you have something that a lot of people want, it didn't seem fair to me that we keep putting the same people on the same committees over and over again. Now, there's exceptions to that. Because volunteerism, you know, there wasn't, everybody wanted to be on volunteerism. But when it came to rules and resolutions, as the chairman, I had to make a decision, how am I going to be fair to everybody? And I know some people are frustrated, upset at me, because they said, well, you didn't keep any of the resolutions people. You've put all new people. Ladies and gentlemen, that was by design. What do I need to have happen for this committee to be powerful and effective? I need the veterans to connect with the newbies and begin to do this and work and be on the same committee and work together. There's another way to do this, I get it. I could come through as your chairman and say, okay, the only people I get picked for these committees to be powerful are the seniority base. If you're not a senior, then, then you don't, if you're not a senior member, you don't get to be on the most popular committees. Maybe that's a better way, I didn't choose to do it that way, I thought it would be more fair to mix it up and to have people connect, and maybe you could call it cross-colonialism in the company, I don't know. Don't get worried, I'll be okay. Anyway, my point is this, I'm worried about the future of the state, I'm worried about the future of this party, and I'm worried about the future of the SREC. And I shouldn't say worried, I'm concerned, that we do it right. This is our time, this is an opportunity that God has gifted us, put it in our lap, go do something, and do something great, and that's why we're going for the way we are. If everyone doesn't want to do it that way, fine, we'll go back to the open, we can give you all two or three committees, we can make it all seniority based, if y'all want to do it that way. I hope that you'll see it my way in terms of saying, look, let's make it where it's fair, and we're also going to mix it up, some of the people on resolutions last time, are some of the strongest members of the committee, why don't we put that and plant them in other places? And some of the people, some of y'all, most of you gave you three choices, some, one, one gal, who I have tremendous respect for, said, just put me wherever you think you need me, chairman. I won't even tell you, my preference is any committee that you want. And I'm not trying to make it sound like everybody should, and I'm not asking for that. But I have five people that put down one name, one committee name. And I'm like, what am I supposed to do with that? Because, hey, I guess I could go back and say, you're not giving your one pick, do you want to give you a second pick? I mean, do y'all want me to do that? I mean, we could do that all day if you want to. I, I thought that people would say, look, here are my three, I'll write my three best choices, and that's what I want to be considered for, and that's how we went for it. And so we figured that, well, if someone had one pick, then what we would do is give them, put them somewhere we have a hole that we need the most help on, and that's how some of the people got there. It wasn't trying to kick people under the curb. So if you look at sixty-two members, five members that put down one committee, ninety-seven percent of you got your, one of your three picks. Only two people out of those five, I believe, despite even getting one of their picks, the three of them picked one committee. So two people in this room are on the committee that put down three choices. Only two people didn't get one of those three choices. That's ninety-seven percent. So with that, I felt like I needed to take a moment to share with you as to what we were trying to do, why we're trying to do it, and what my hope is, and I think that whatever committee you've been placed on, I hope you will pour your energies and your commitment and your dedication to make that the best committee possible in SREC, and I think we'll take you down. So you've seen the committee appointments, does anyone, does anyone have a copy? Floor's open for approval of the committee appointments by the chairman.
I move approval of the...
Name and SD, please.
Mike Clancy said, District Five, I move approval of committee appointments.
Just a second.
Mark Dunn, who's second.
Oh, okay, Mark Dunn, second. Discussion, floor's open for discussion. Name and SD.
Jeremy Wos or SD Pan, or I'm in opposition. Chairman, I have to note that, yeah, I reminded a people, this is strange and unfortunate that I'm standing up here to the state committee appointments. I'm like, mess people, I'm sure I believe those are supposed to be a foregone conclusion. It's not about trusting the chairman or anything like that. However, I've talked to plenty, I've heard from plenty, there's a lot of discontent about these appointments, so I, I have to stand and speak in opposition for several reasons. First, the fundamental lack of communication. Your speech in favor there, you talked a lot about it being binary, that either do the old way that was bad or a new way that's different. I'm not asking for that, I'm asking for communication, we're a conservative party, we don't make changes lightly. We received these appointments only a few days ago to review them, despite the fact that, as you know me, you want to do things differently, most of us were surprised by the list. No one I've talked to got that phone call. Yes, I think we should call five people, I think you can call sixty people or have Snap call them. I've talked to thirty in the last two days while working for Time. When you ran for this office, when you talked to me, you talked about an SREC that would give direction itself and would have better communication, and I'm just not seeing that here. I'm not, I'm not asking us to just binary, old way or new way. I'm asking for, again, communication. You mentioned in your email and your discussion, a high number, number of people who got at least your second choice. But no, that form, I, I'm a pretty smart guy, I didn't read the form. It says the top circle, number one circle, one of these two or three committees, number two, circle one of these committees. Doesn't say, give us your top three. Maybe some people just skipped the instructions and wrote their top three, whatever, I don't need to get into those weeds. But the point is that this is not what we expected to see, and you didn't have communication. I totally understand from your email and your discussion, you've got reasons for the changes, and a lot of it's like they have merit. They're great ideas, probably, but taken together, it's too much. It's too much to have the three days notice. Um, I would have loved to have it two weeks ago, in time to talk about it, we don't have that. So all I can do right now is stand up and say, let's vote no, let's have that conversation over the next few weeks, let's come back in September. Would have been great to get a head start this year, that was a cool thing to try, but I don't think it worked this time. So let's, let's try to get in September with a list that more people are satisfied with. Second, this arbitrary decision people can't serve on two committees, except that there are some exceptions. Several people are now only serving on committees that, yes, are important, yes, fundamentally are full-time, full-year committees, but really their function is mostly part of the year, that's why, as I understand it from y'all, that's why exceptions were made, some people that are on CRC or other committees, because you guys acknowledged that that's a fact. Bigger deal to me is the fact that, yes, all the committees matter, but we have committees that are in our bylaws and we have committees that aren't in our bylaws. They're ad hoc, they're undefined, they're new legislative, I'm a big fan of it, it's new, it's undefined. Volunteerism does great work, but they're not, we have a people in our bylaws for some reason. And if my math's right, twenty-two people on the SREC are not on a standing committee of the SREC. Not anymore are only on, yet CRC is a standing committee. Meanwhile, some thirty-three people, half of us, have all the spots on those standing committees. It's not about some committees are doing, some are bad, it's about, there's a difference between them, and maybe I'm just going to look into, I'm guessing maybe that's why the form has multiple districts of committees, some that are standing and some that are not. Some committees are standing, they're procedural, they meet here, we equip for policy for the SREC, the body accrues, others go out and do a lot of work in the people, those are fundamentally different work levels, and if there's a concern, people can't do the work they volunteered for. Yes, I expect there to be conversations, we can stab the volunteers and those people, get everybody where it's appropriate. Some people have third-county districts, and that takes up a lot of our time, some of us do not. When you have more time, maybe you commit to state level, everybody has their gifts from God and their talents, and we need opportunities to have dialogue and plug in the places that are best for us. Third, the lack of balance. You're in this, if you're talking about how much the man resolutions and rules are, which makes complete sense, but at the same time, you're cutting the number of resolutions that have. You want to increase opportunity while giving fewer slots, I just, I, I can't see the wisdom there myself. Another piece of that is the overturn, the fact that no one's returning the resolution. I'm not saying it has to always be ignored, I'm not, I'm also not saying it shouldn't always be new people, you need to balance. Lots of people serve on a committee, they see how they can do it better next time, they have ideas for next time, they expect a chance to come back and try again, share that institutional knowledge, very conservative principle, that we're getting rid of it, we're making them a fundamentally revolving door, you get one shot, now the next people get there for you. You talk a lot about unity, I believe in unity, that's one reason why I have a stand up in the street against this, because I don't see a mix of voices on those committees, I don't see, especially with seven people, a chance for the different voices in the SREC, elected by their district. We don't always agree to come forward in the committee, have it out there, have the discussion, to find the unity in that room, so that when it comes to the full SREC, maybe we're going to still have some discussion, but we don't have the six-hour meeting there. That's a really important factor in function of committees, and I, I see that going on. I'm worried that we're walking into two years of every rules discussion, every resolutions discussion happening in the body of the SREC, because people didn't get the chance to find that unity in the community. And that's a fundamental reason I, I'm asking you to do this in September and give us a chance to talk about it. Again, this is a weird thing to get up and speak opposed to, but I urge you all to send a message that you need to try this again and go in that way.
All right, uh, did you hear after I responded to a couple of those points? Is that right?
Just looking at the chart, JT, you guys still up? There appear to be, several of my colleagues actually serve on multiple committees.
What several?
Uh, let's see, one, two, three, four.
Okay, are they all on CRC in addition to that? Now, were any members on this committee that were, if there was, anybody serving on two committees, the other committee was CRC?
Right, but there's one exception, Wayne.
Well, I don't know, I mean, but, just, let me check, okay, so, hold on. Can I, can I respond? If the requirement, if your requirement as a committee is that everybody you serve, you don't feel like it's a legitimate committee if you're not on a standing committee. And now it's sixty-two members that are on, not twen, not nine committees, but instead on five committees, twelve members per committee. If I put a large number of people on one committee, it's going to pull off the others. If y'all don't want, if you feel like that some of these committees are not valid, they're not important... not important, then let's get rid of them. If you don't feel like you're serving a legitimate purpose, let's get rid of them and we'll focus the talents. And with respect, guys, we're just doing the best we can here. You know what? It is a tough job, and I get it. Let me finish one second, then I'll call Michael, get Will, I'll get you back. Since the state convention happened, we've had the national convention, the preparation, I've had to raise beaucoups of money, and I've spoken all over the state of Texas. I wish I could just stop doing everything and just do nothing but focus on committee assignments, but I don't have the time. I don't have the staff to do that. And if somebody doesn't get on their three, I guess I could have to pick up the phone and call them personally, but whenever Jeremy called yesterday Thursday, I literally told him, I said, I've got to get off the phone to go talk to his pastor. So, it's only good, we all have a lot of other we can do. And with respect to him, but we're just doing the best we can. Mike, Will, and then Virgil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Stay back there, yeah. Name and SD.
Michael Clancy, Senator District Five. When we had this call for this meeting, I thought, okay, how controversial can it be? Approval of S R C committee appointments, approval can of chair appointments? Well, some people seem that everything has to be controversial. I don't find that a problem. When I was elected to the S R C, I was elected to build up this party, and I think many of us feel that way. And I don't go looking for finding a problem and everything. I also don't look before, when we're doing S R C business, to be negotiating this stuff on social media. I mean, if we want to talk about S R C business, we can talk about S R C business, but we don't need to involve the whole state in what we're doing, and that happens way too much. We need to talk about building up this party, and anything we do on social media, whether it's this topic or any other topic, needs to be talking about building up this party. And I think this is a controversy looking for a problem.
All right, and I think Will, and then I'll get you Virgil.
Yeah, I just had a point, but I was wondering, do we still have the seating rule on debate? No.
We'd have to re, we'd have to reapprove.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I guess, all right, so wait a minute. Yeah, that's right. So, we had, I guess the first one was, I don't.
Jeremy's against.
I'm in, let's pull on.
You made, okay, so you've now spoken favor, there's one against. Will, it was a question, I think.
Yes.
I think I said, Virgil, so you four against?
Oh, I want to speak in opposition.
Okay, go ahead.
So, my name is Virgil Cruz, and I'm S R C of Houston, SD fifteen. For those of you who know me, I'm not someone who likes controversy. In fact, I do a lot to avoid controversy. I believe, I have tremendous respect for, look at the chair and his decisions, I have tremendous respect for all of y'all. You know, I see so much talent in this room, and it's such a blessing to be a part of you guys, and when I, when I received the committee appointments, I did so, and with a little apprehension, and I didn't read them and say, I want to create a thing, I didn't want to create a controversy. I spoke to many of y'all in the last few days, in between doing a lot of C R C stuff, you know, like the chair, I was doing a lot of other stuff, too. But, in talking to y'all, I felt like many of you felt that, in particular with rules and resolutions, that these are committees that, yes, while, you know, every committee is important, a lot of those committees are outwardly focused, they're what we do when we leave this room, when we leave this body. And I think rules and resolutions are much more internal, and they need to be larger in my view. They need to be committees where there's time for debate, to be able to do it in the session on Friday, in the Rules Committee meeting, in the Resolutions Committee meeting, to get those arguments, to flesh those out, so that we can focus on those things on Saturday, so that we can focus on the things that make us outwardly focused, that make us effective when we go back to our districts, to get Republicans elected. That's why we're all here. But these committees also are, by nature, they're controversial, and they need to be larger, they need to be representative of those sixty-two people. And I respect the chair's thought that, you know, maybe one, one committee each, you know, if you look at legislators in the state legislature, they serve on multiple committees. We're talented people, we can serve on multiple committees if we have that will, that desire. And I would just ask that we reconsider this today, and whatever we decide, I will respect it, and I'll move forward, and I'll forget this argument, because I'm not wanting to bring up arguments again. I think we need to move forward, but maybe not yet. And I would, I would still move at this time to postpone these committee appointments to September, that's my motion, and I would ask that you guys consider that, so that we can move on after that, when this, we come to a decision that this body can feel good about, that we're completely behind it. And again, I don't want to make this about the chair. You know, Tom, I have tremendous respect for you, but I think, I'm not ready to do this today, and I would ask you to consider that, please.
I'll say.
We moved in second, we moved in second to postpone consideration to the September meeting, I'm sorry. So, we're running, we're running behind schedule, I'm sorry, but we'll just make it work. The motion on the floor is to postpone consideration to the September meeting, is that not right? Virgil, is that what you said? Is the movement second, the motion be discussed, debatable? Motion's debatable, I think he's already spoke to, is there someone else to speak against the motion for postponing consideration?
Can I have a point of information?
Could you stand and name and SD?
Yes, Randan Steinhouser, SD twenty-four, just as a new member, so if we postpone this, is there a chance for the committees to change in the interim, or are we having this exact same conversation again at the next meeting?
The motion on the floor is to approve the appointments as presented to you, the motion, that was the motion initially made, this motion is postponed consideration to the next meeting.
Right, but if it is postponed, it's the exact same slate that we'll be discussing at the next meeting, there's not going to be changes in the interim.
If the motion to postpone is adopted, then there are no committees until the September Saturday meeting, at which time hopefully the committee appointments will be converted, and then the committees will come into existence.
So, to be clear, we could use the interim between now and September to communicate effectively with each other about which committees, if it's voted down, the body would like to be on.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. To answer the question, Jeremy Gloss, I can answer the original question a bit more fully. If we postpone the current affairs, we don't vote it down, we only postpone, it is the motion that would come up this September evening, however, at that time, could the chairman not withdraw his motion with the unanimous consensus of the point, and present a new list of ratifications for the committee that had it?
He could.
Thank you.
The motion is under consideration, is postponing, is that what y'all raising your hand, you're considering? Okay, Jane, are you speaking in favor? Okay, we've got one in favor of postponing. Speaking against postponing? Okay, would you stand and turn around and talk? Name and SD.
I think there's a lot of merit to reworking some of this, like Sam Dalton's on three committees and, you know.
He's on three committees?
Yes.
Sorry to say, is he here? That was unintentional, I apologize. I didn't know how that happened.
I'm just jealous because he's not on the volunteer side. Anyway, you know, so, I mean, I see some areas where we could stand some rework. The thing that I'm concerned about, it sounds like I'm getting.
Y'all hear her?
Sounds like I'm getting wishy-washy here, but my concern is, like, the committee I chair, we barely have enough committee meetings anyway to get through all of it, and to not be able to start in September is a problem. Volunteer, I'm the chair of volunteerism, and, I mean, it is, this is a major work committee to watch the R C, and I've been determined of that, too. It's very difficult to get it all in with what we do, and that's my concern. I think, I hear Jeremy concerns, and I see some things here that I'd like to change, you know? And so, postponing has a, has some merit, too. So, it's kind of, I'm kind of speaking out of both sides of the map, because I see both sides, but, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna put a lot of, a lot more stress on the, on the working, the task-oriented committees out there.
We have one for one against, who are you speaking for? Okay, Randy, name and SD.
Randy, D O N E, SD sixteen. You know, this whole thing about controversy reminds me of one of the biggest complaints that used to come up when I was on the city council, they'd say, that's politics that's going on. And I said, yes, politics has broken out at city hall, who would have thunk it? Of course, resolving controversy is what we do, that is part of the, that is the mother's milk of politics. The bank is the mother's milk of politics. Why do we even have a political process but to resolve controversies among men? Okay? That's why we have. Now, I, I hope we have two things, we have three things we can do. We can approve it, we can, we can reject it, which by the way, leaves us in limbo, or we can postpone it and appeal to the chair to try to fix it. And that's what I think we need to do, is we need to vote to postpone, go ahead and fix this thing, and then get broad approval out of the body for the new structure of the committees. These committees are, as the chairman has said, very, very important. Now, when I build committees or teams at Lockheed Martin to do particular systems, what do I do? I don't just pick because, oh, he's never done this, he's never done this, he's never done this. I put new, fresh ideas, and I put experienced people with those, that team as well, in order to make sure that we have a balanced team of both experienced and new people, and so.
Okay, so we've had two in favor, one against. Let me make this, I want to see what y'all think of this idea. Because, let me tell you, I mean, I've been on the S R C, I've been, I've told you that before, I've been a county chairman three times, and I'll tell you the same thing I told my county S, E, C's. It's your committee, you're going to run this, it's your committee. So, perhaps as a compromise, if somebody says, well, just put, just load this thing up, I have a problem with that. I don't have twelve, fifteen, and twenty people on these committees, because you cannot effectively, if everybody gets to speak for two, three minutes, then what happens, it goes on and on. But what about as a compromise, if we consider it today?
It's a great example.
You can postpone it, I don't care if you postpone, I really don't care. I don't care either way, but I would suggest the possibility of a compromise. If the committee says to amend the original motion to say that the chairman will evaluate to add three, to add up to ten, to have ten members per committee, and anybody who wants to serve on two committees, they would communicate with my staff, with me, I guess, in Mexico and Texas, G O P, our work, and say, I would like to serve on a second committee, and this is what I want it to be. We still have a problem, because we have ten people that do that, and they all want to be on resolutions, we don't have, we only have spots for whatever. Is that something that anybody would be interested in?
I follow that, I think that's a good idea.
Well, okay, but I think we got to handle one about postponing. So, Vicki, you have a raise your hand, and I'll get Mark, and then I'll get Jerry, and then we're going to.
I have a suggestion, since it's a general consensus that people didn't fill out the form, I think the form needs to be rewritten and explained about the process of your choices, resubmitted, so you can look and see what we really want to do. I think anyone that is on the S R C, we're doing this because we want to make a difference. And, yes, we're willing to work, and we're willing to commit, and we're willing to do more than one committee, some of us are, some of us are dedicated to one committee, and if we can do more, we should be allowed to do more. The thing about letting the, abrogant and letting them add, I think you're putting the chairman of these committees in the position that they will have to pick and choose who they want on the committee, and then I think that would be a personality thing, and we are getting a lot of, we don't want to start, and I, and I do not want to start this committee to be, and I just, I think we need to go back and let it on the form. Correct. I mean, if the form is for that, where people understood, even if they were, and we held it out, correctly, I don't think we would be having this with all the committees. Other thing is, there was committees that I didn't know I had a choice of even asking for. And that's one of the things, because what if I would prefer number one to be something I didn't even know that the committee had in form? So, there, and my hope, I mean, my new form, transparency, share us an email or text and say, this is probably some habit. And, I mean, I want transparency, I want to know, I don't want to know absent that. And that seems to be what is happening, is after it all blows up, you're getting some explanation. That, that's my, that's my concern, and I don't know if that's for or against, but I would like to.
She's thinking in favor, so now we've got three in favor, one against. Guys, I'm not trying to be non-transparency, I, I did the, I committed to transparency. Well, it wasn't, the new leaders on the rise is a task force, the legislative was one that we responded from as a result of what the convention did, and maybe we should have sent out, say, hey, this is the legislative committee. The, hold on, the people that, and I believe this is to be accurate, as far as I can tell, everybody that got on legislative committee, the legislative committee came from a list of people that wanted to be on resolutions.
Point of order. What, chairman is debating?
It's an explanation. Y'all not want that explanation? I'm happy not to give one if you don't want.
So, it sounds like debate from a point of order.
Okay, you're at, okay. Go ahead. The motion is to postpone, we've had three in favor, one, two, three, we've had one against. Anyone want to speak against the motion, postpone? Mark? Name and SD.
Mark Dunn, SD twenty-nine. Ladies and gentlemen, we have all elected a chairman and a vice chairman by all the folks in this room, as well as all the Dagon delegates who were at the convention. That's our leader, that's the captain of the ship, and Amy is the Dagon first mate. We all need, we all, we all need to hit the heck on war and sit there, this is, he lived with the way that it was set up by Stephen Starey before, and everybody was on those committees. You've got to spread the love around, not everybody going to simply, you know, it's not a Dagon Supreme Court appointment that you're going to be in, in them resolutions or rules from now until perpetuity. It doesn't work that way. So, spread the love, click your little heels together, salute the flag, the enemy is not this room, the enemy is the Democratic Party.
We've got three in favor of postponing, two against, is there anyone else against postponing? You want to speak against?
Chair, Chair Wilson, SD twenty-two. There's compelling reasons for consideration, you never want to punish an issue. On the other hand, there's a compelling need to get on with business, we've got an election out in front of us. You kind of stole my thunder, I was going to propose opening up the committees to an additional two or three slots, letting everybody who wants to serve on additional committees stick up their hands, and if it's oversubscribed, you can do a little lottery, pick straws. You know, if there's a concern about, about brinksmanship or inside gangery, the either the committee chairman or the party chairman or vice chairman can just pick straws and determine it that way. I think it's important that we move on and amend the committees that we have, that we have to make the work of.
Okay, so there's been three in favor, three against postponing, is there someone who speaks in favor or against? Mark? Yeah, what's, you got any more?
I have a point of.
Can you stand?
Yes, Michael Clancy, SD. If we do not make the appointments today, does that make our Friday committee day? I know, so sorry, but we don't meet as a body until Saturday to approve, so Friday will be for, for what?
Friday, the committees can make, they just can't conduct any business, so.
I don't, I don't understand how it works.
We're going to try and powder our boots, right? The question was, if they're not approved today, what happens in September? Well, do we even have committees? I guess we don't have committees.
No.
There aren't any committees. We would be inclined to say you can be unofficially, except that they're not even approved, there's not even, y'all basically not wanting them, so I don't know what to do with them. Go ahead, Mike, you have a question?
Yes, point of information. So, what I want to know is, assuming the committee chairs become the committee chairs, how many of these committees need to be in September, because they can't wait until December? I mean, is that going to affect their ability to do their work? I'd like to know which committees need to be in September, and how important is that? I'm saying we have a decision so that they can do that.
Okay, so, all right, so let, I think what the request from him is, could he poll, could we poll the chairs to respond to that question?
Yes.
All right, or in party org?
Yeah, we're in charge of voter registration.
So they say you ask.
Before November.
Volitionism, yes or no?
I was my concern, I want to start in September, but.
She wants to start in September.
The question was, can, could we start with a group that we have, and add, you have, we both are at it?
Well, that depends if the committee wants to go back and, and, I told y'all, we put three more on there. And y'all, I don't care.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Not hold, not hold to me, my question on my inquiry was, can we have a meeting in September with what you've done with the, uh, option to add the three that you've, that are selected?
Yeah, okay, I think her question to me, y'all, question is, if, if the committees are approved, and they begin to function and have new members added in accordance to whatever the direction you give me, the answer is yes. That can be done. You have a.
Parliamentary inquiry. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
They answered last question first.
Hold on a second. All right, the other chairs, Candy Noble is new resident, and by the way, y'all, Candy wanted to be at G R C, I asked her to chair resolutions, thank you for doing that, you're a great leader of the party, I appreciate you.
And we would not be able to, and we would not be able to look at any resolutions in September against this, if we postpone.
Okay, so no consideration of that, where's rules, Melinda?
We wouldn't be able to look at any changes, but I don't know that that's a thing to do for rules.
Okay, uh, I don't think you'll fix, uh, C R C, Tina, where's Tina?
Here.
Oh, sorry.
I just have the team, we pick all our auxiliaries, we invite them back to join the Republican Party to help us in the fall, to help with the presidential campaign. I gotta know who our auxiliaries are gonna be, and I can't wait till this happens.
Grassroots Club, David Haverson, you want to stand up and tell us what that would affect you?
Grassroots Club, we just want to make sure, we want to make sure that we have the ability to, uh, to move forward, we have a big goal, and we just want to make sure we can make, make decisions that are important to raising money, to, to November.
Amy, you legislated?
It was my intention in the September meeting of legislative committees to give the review, the priorities that might be coming forth from the S R C in September, and make the groundwork for those.
Uh, Tony Anne is in another room, that's ongoing all the time, so does that?
Will has an.
I love that sound.
Go ahead, yeah, and there's no one that's on audio that, uh, that needs to get reappointed too, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take it on.
Side, side selection committee, we were planning on being able to bring the presentation to the September committee.
Right. And I think that is getting put on this list.
I forgot one.
All right, is this related to his inquiry?
Yeah, so, party org is also in charge of the ballot security initiative for our state, and if we can't hit the ground running in September, we're not gonna be able to get an effective ballot integrity, um, progress together for the next question.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Hold on, no, we're gonna get Terry next, because he's been standing there, and he's been very gracious to wait. All right, hold on, Mike, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, that would be.
Please, Terry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, would a motion be in order at?
David S D.
Terry Holcomb, S D three, would a motion be in order at this time, because I think people agree that we probably need to get these committees going, would a motion be in order specifically to add a specific number of, of seats on the committees that I think everybody thinks needs to have committees added to, so would it be? You, you offered a compromise earlier, so I'm trying to figure out when that motion will be appropriate.
If it's not in order at this time, we have to decide whether you want to postpone consideration in September, we're gonna.
My inquiry is, when will it be appropriate?
Uh, well, if, if the, if the body chooses to postpone consideration, then it won't be appropriate until the next meeting. All right, if you choose to, uh, if this gets voted down and it gets settled today, it would be okay to amend that mo- motion on the floor.
Thank you.
Mark has been very gracious in waiting, you want to speak, we're at three and three, you want to speak in favor or against postponing?
In favor of postponing.
Okay?
And, and like Virgil said, first, first, to answer a couple of y'all's questions, I chaired resolutions last time for the benefit of the new members. The committees don't exist on September Friday, but they have always met on Friday, they just can't do official business.
But we don't do.
Okay.
Hold on, ladies and.
It's never caused us to lose an election in the past, is my point. Okay? Now, I, I, like Virgil said, I have enormous respect for Tom. Okay, we don't agree on everything, I went to Texas Tech, he went to Texas A and M. But, but we do agree on most things, well over Ronald Reagan's eighty percent threshold, okay, but I have serious problems with, with the committee structure as it is. So bear with me, I won't be along with it as.
Can you keep your comments to whether you should postpone consideration?
Yes, yes, that's what this addresses. George Washington in his farewell address warned against factions, okay, that was one of his biggest warnings, if you go back and read that. Steve Munster, in a letter seventeen months ago, supporting Tom, put one of Tom's key attributes as having brought the party back together and avoided factions that existed back before for the members that were, that were here last year. Tom himself, just today, is talking about full transparency, and that's also in the documents, for those of you that did help vote him in, um, as I did, in seventeen months ago. We all have strengths and weaknesses, passions, issues we care about, others, frankly, sometimes we don't care about all that much, doesn't mean they're not important, it's just not our bag. I think it was Jeremy mentioned gifts. Well, this morning, in quiet time, I looked at First Corinthians twelve, and it specifically talks about all these different gifts. Now, we are not a church, but we are a body. Those of you that have been here before, how many times does Bush refer to us as the body? If, if we were to adopt this as is, we are in essence asking eyes to be ears, we're asking a nose to be a foot, and, and while there might be a way, because we've got some brilliant people in this room, there might be a way that, that we might sort of function in those new capacities, it's not our preference, it's not our passion, it's not our strength, it's not our, it may be one of our weaknesses, certainly in my case. On rules, firstly, I think the Rules Committee is the most egregious, not, not any disrespect to those of you that got pointed to that, but we have some of the most brilliant people in the state in this room, in Jeremy, Virgil, and Randall Dunning, when it comes to rules. All three of them asked to be appointed to rules, two of them asked to chair it. I suggest that all three of them should at least be members. On resolutions, I mean, Tom referenced the great support that we did on the legislative priorities that we did two years ago, that was what came out of the rule of the Resolutions Committee two years ago. Seven of the eight returning members of the Resolutions Committee asked to be on resolutions, and zero were appointed, okay? In my case, I kind of get it, in the other six, and I don't quite get it, okay? Some of us frankly have been hit with a baseball bat. To approve this is to abdicate our responsibility to grassroots and ourselves. We're not here as a rubber stamp, or a distant past for you older people, we're not. There's been a lot of things said, there's misunderstandings maybe on the forum, on the intent of the forum, on whether we could be on one or two committees. Personally, I think most people in this room cherish the idea of being on two or even three committees, that's why we're here, but at least ask us if we're willing to do that. And so, so I suggested, like, uh, someone said, it's not a binary option, the third way is to postpone this, open it back up, have full transparency, and I've got, I've got three quick points on how to do that. First, release all the preferences, let us know how everybody's preference actually was, I've given you a few that were near and dear to my heart, but we have no idea of how everybody actually had their preferences. Second, fill those committees. I've been on countless committees in my career, and a larger committee, given enough time, always, underscore always, comes up with a better answer. We, we had fourteen, no, fifteen very strong opinionated members on resolutions, and I thought it worked really, really well, and most of the grassroots did too. Fill those committees, and in some cases, we might even informally have mutual tracks. You may have gotten a committee that was your third choice, I may have gotten one that was my second, but you might actually want to switch, open it up, full transparency, and then the third step, go forward in unity after the September meeting.
Are you ready for the?
There's a question that's been out there.
Are you, hold on a second, Jeremy, were you at, what, did you raise your hand to speak, or did you raise your hand?
No, I, I wanted to speak.
Okay, hang on. What's in court?
My inquiry, there's a question out there about what we could do in September, I want to get the bottomless, so, I asked earlier the question, if we postponed it, yes, the same list comes up, the chair could put out a new list, and the interim state's intention to replace it. So as has been stated in the past, in September, the committees would be informally on Friday, and we would do our business on Saturday, and we haven't lost an election that way yet, so if the chairman put out a new list, is there anything preventing that new list from being the groups that got together informally on Friday? There's no reason that as a unit of this, could not be informed on Friday, there's no question that we have to know, correct?
I think that's true.
There's no question, we wouldn't be locked and unable to have informed, you know, right?
Okay, in order for the committee to come into existence, this body must confirm the appointments. Until the appointments are confirmed, these committees could be, shall we say, they can meet, they can sit around a table, they can chew the fat, they can kick things around, but they cannot conduct business, they don't exist as a committee. Does that answer the question?
To be very specific, the group that sits around informally and chews the fat is not locked to, to this list in this mail, it's a different group.
It could be a different question, yes, but it's completely informal, unofficial.
Lisa Springfield, S D twenty-nine. I am new to this, and I'm really disappointed. First of all, I speak in opposition to the motion to postpone, it was my intention to come here, I didn't choose a committee I'm on, I'm sorry, if, as a newcomer, I took somebody's spot. Um, a third of your, a third of us are new, you don't know what our talents are yet, you don't know what our gifts are yet, give us a chance. I am willing to work on any committee that I'm put on, and if there's some other committee that I have my heart set on, which I, there is, I'm gonna contact that chairman personally and find out what can I do, what do they want me to do in my district? To me, that's what volunteering is all about, and I'm really disappointed in the debate going on, we can put, we, I don't want to postpone, I want the committees to get started. We can go in in September and make another motion to add or delete people from certain committees, but let us get going, the election is right around the corner. Thank you.
Call the question?
Ron Delice, S D thirty-one, call the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
A T, second. Motion of the floors to, uh, tur, uh, previous question has been called, all in favor of any debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, debates ended on the, the motion on the floor.
Oh, sorry.
If I had a second voting, did you? The debate is over with respect to the motion to postpone, we're gonna go to a vote. Is this a question about voting?
No, sir, it's, uh, I just want to offer a caution.
No, you're.
It's not discussion.
Is there, is this a question about proceeding to a vote?
Yes, about how to, if, if, uh, if we vote to postpone, can you, um, or, no, if we vote to, uh, approve, can you still add, or will that close?
No, it's open, you can add more new members later. Is that your question?
No, it can be.
They can be added, but. The motion that's, that we are gonna vote on at this time, all in favor of postponing consideration until the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, sir. All in favor, stand. All right, okay, the question that, uh, I have, according to the rules that were passed at the convention, there is a question related to roll call vote, is that what your question is, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark, I want, uh, I want Bush to address it, hang on, who else is down there just a second?
Okay, dudes, here, what's the new rule passed, and, uh, just to make sure everybody's clear on it, there's to be a roll call vote on any vote that deals with bylaws, rules, or resolutions. This one does not. In addition, it's only on the final votes, furthermore, the roll call can be waived with unanimous consideration.
Paul, can you answer the current, the gentleman, J J, with S D eleven, and the current, that, would you have the volunteer in the following? In the current S R C bylaws, what is the requirement for calling for a roll call vote? Just to educate, what's in the, in the S R C bylaws?
The question, the question was, what is the requirement for roll call vote by the, for the S R C?
Yes.
Requirement is either a motion of the body by petition in writing, or a particular motion, if twenty percent of the body or more signs a petition, there'll be a roll call vote. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, all in favor of postponing consideration to the next meeting, please stand. Staff, yeah, if, if you're a member and you're holding a proxy, please, uh, hold up your one arm. If you're a member.
Trying to work.
Okay, don't, you just need to stand, if you're a proxy, just stand if you want to vote, and if you are a, a member and have a proxy, raise your hand, we need two votes. Are you standing? Come on up here. Stand up, Sheldon, again. Charlie, can we come up? The dog now? Everybody now?
Yes.
Please, please stand. All opposed to postponing, please stand. Okay, so thirty in favor, twenty-two against, motion is tabled to the next meeting. Postpone, sorry. Next item of business is the approval of the county chair appointments, can we have those?
I move adoption, uh, the approval of the county chairs, do you want me to read them or just add the structure of them?
How many are there? Okay, does anyone not have a copy of the list of county chair appointments? I think everybody has.
There's fifteen.
Fifteen, y'all want a read?
No.
Anybody want a read on that? All right, what's the motion, approved?
Yeah, I move adoption or approval of the county chair appointments, it's listed on the agenda of the S R C.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Shh. I'm not allowed to say shh. You gotta use the sky. I hope I put my finger under and hit it. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Approved. Approved.
Wow.
All right. Next item of business, we're only, uh, we're only an hour and five missed by our schedule. Um, I'd like to call on Patrick O'Daniel. He's our general counsel for the new members, and sitting in forty-five or thirty minutes to talk about bylaws, probably gets ten.
All right, uh, I'm Patrick O'Daniel. Those of you who've known me from prior meetings, you know I like to be very fast on my, uh, on my remarks. We're going to, we're going to keep that for this topic as well. We're going to be moving right along.
Flatter, flatter.
Uh, just for y'all. Okay, can you hear me now?
No.
Okay, how's this? No? Hold on. How's this?
Yeah.
All right, now we can move along. I'm Patrick O'Daniel, general counsel, Republican Party of Texas. Been the general counsel since 2010. I, just a little, uh, fast background, I'm a tax partner at Norton Rose Fulbright. You might know it as Fulbright and Jaworski. I, uh, graduated from University of Texas, uh, honors business accounting. I am a CPA. Also graduated from University of Texas School of Law and adjunct professor there since 2000. I clerked for Judge Will Garwin on the Fifth Circuit and Justice Clarence Thomas on United States Supreme Court. Let's move right along to the SREC bylaws. Oh, and I'm missing a, uh...
Pointer?
No, I'm missing a battery out of this thing. Uh, wait, wait. You know, we're in a fancy pants place here when we, uh, there we go. It's like MacGyver. All right. Let me assess, let me assess this decent. He put the batteries in backwards. I'm not the one that put this. I did put this in. I only have a small amount of time and cannot talk about all my kids.
At the projector, please.
Oh. All right, moving on. Oh, there we go. All right. I'm going to talk about the SREC bylaws and, uh, the bylaws we already passed. Uh, the current ones were passed at the organizational meeting immediately following the convention. They just applied the SREC, no one else, so other counties have, uh, can and do have other bylaws. Membership, move one more, uh, one more. Structure of the party. You have the RNC on top, then the SREC, then you have county executive committees, precinct committees. Uh, the only important thing on this entire slide is right there at the bottom. It's the grassroots. That's the most important thing. You couldn't have all this other mess if it wasn't for them. Move along. All right, the RNC. Uh, the chair is Ryan's Prebus. The vice chair is Chair Day. They're elected by RNC members. Each state has three members. The state chair, uh, Tom Meckler, the national committee man, Dr. Robin Armstrong, national committee woman, Toni Ann Dashel. Uh, we just went through all this, but these positions are up for election during presidential election years. The national committee man and committee woman for four-year terms, the state year, uh, state chair for a two-year term, which means the state chair is elected at every state convention. Move on. Uh, our, okay, the RPT structure. The state chair is Tom Meckler. The vice chair is Amy Clark. We have sixty-two SREC members. That's one man and one woman for each of the thirty-one, uh, senatorial districts. Cassie tells me there's thirty-one because there's thirty-one chapters in Proverbs, there's a hundred and fifty reps because there's a hundred and fifty chapters in the Book of Psalms. If that's wrong, go blame Cassie. All right. Just like the chair and the vice chair, all SREC members are elected every two years. Uh, their term limited out after four years. The chair and the vice chair do not have term limits, other than their sanity. My guess is Meckler's term is coming up shortly. But that short committee, uh, committee woman used to have term limits, but they don't anymore because RNC does base everything on seniority, and we were always at the back of the line as a result. Uh, last, the, uh, non-voting officers. Uh, the secretary is elected by the SREC, but everyone else is either appointed by the chair alone or appointed by the chair and confirmed by officials. Next slide. Officers, next slide. All right, what are the duties of the state chair? Uh, official spokesman for the RPT, presides of all SREC many meetings, temporary chair at the biennial state convention, as just, uh, discussed, makes appointments, calls meetings, is a voting member of the SREC, all SREC committees and the RNC, ensures RPT compliance with all rules and safekeeping of records. And then probably the, uh, last, but also the most important, or at least takes up a lot of his time, uh, the chair supervises and manages party staff along with the ED, Kyle Wadley. I might add, not on here, is the most important duty that takes up most of his time, which is to raise money for the, uh, RPT. Um, next slide. All right, state vice chair and secretary. Vice chair assists the state chair is needed. Typically, this is to, uh, head up special projects, ad hoc committees, uh, performs the duties of the state chair when the state chair is absent, like the state chair is a voting member of the SREC and SREC committees. Secretary may be an SREC, uh, member, in which case that person votes or not, if doesn't vote, uh, keeps minutes, calls role at meetings, like other ex officio members of committees. Uh, but there's no voting though, can't attend those other committees. Uh, next slide. Vacancies. Uh, as an SREC member, you of course may resign. It needs to be in writing. Email that to the chair, and that's fine. Uh, vacancies are filled by getting notice in the official call for the upcoming SREC meeting. Such notice must be written and sent out at least twelve days beforehand. That's just the general notice rule, by the way. Uh, two-thirds of the SREC may waive, uh, if there's death or some other extraordinary circumstances. I can tell you it's a practical matter. We have had that come up in the past, but it has to come up right before the meeting. Typically, that does not occur, so there's plenty of time, and we're able to go through the regular notice procedures. All right, state chair vacancy. Uh, the vice chair then calls the meeting within thirty days, or the state chair can do so and prepares an irrevocable resignation in writing, and the resignation is accepted by the SREC or officials committee. This is exactly what our state chair before Meckler did, ministeries. He actually submitted a resignation. Uh, he, uh, indicated a date months in advance, which corresponded with the next SREC meeting, so there was plenty of time to, uh, have an, an election in candidates, and, uh, so we didn't have to go through all this, where you have to have at least ten days' notice. There was a lot more notice than that. Next slide. Appointed officials. Uh, Cassie corrected me, they're not appointed officials. They're appointed because they're subject to appointment, but that hadn't happened yet. So thank you, Cassie. Uh, there's two flavors of them. There's appointed and confirmed by officials, treasury, the treasurer and the assistant treasurers, general counsel and assistant general counsels, and sergeant-at-arms. Then you have just appointed by the chair. That's the parliamentarian and any assistants. We haven't had any while I've been general counsel, because we have Bush, uh, Butch. We don't need any assistants when we have Butch. Uh, you'll see the sergeant-at-arms is listed twice. That's to make sure you're still awake. If you're wondering and on pins and needles which one of these categories the sergeant-at-arms should actually be in, go pester Cassie. I'm sure she'll straighten it out for you. Uh, then you have the chaplain and the historian as well. Uh, appointed officials have no term of office, uh, hence the reason I've been here since 2010. I'd love a term of office. We're still working with Meckler on that. Uh, we serve at the pleasure of Tom Meckler. I don't know if he'd describe it as pleasure, but we'll use pleasure right now. Anyway, there's a state chair vacancy. We serve until the new chair is elected, and then all, uh, the offices are immediately vacated. Next slide. Meetings, next slide. Okay, they are statutory, they're quarterly. In election years like this one, the fourth quarterly meeting must be held after the election. Uh, organizational meeting, we've already done. We have special meetings that can be called by the chair or have petitioned by at least fifteen SREC members from at least ten different senatorial districts, delivered to the secretary at least fourteen days prior to the date of the meeting, and that must be included on the agenda. I can't recall ever having a, uh, special meeting outside of redistricting litigation, where we actually had our entire calendar thrown out of whack, so we had to have special meetings called as a result. Other than that, I can't recall, uh, doing a special meeting. Shouldn't be an issue now on the redistricting. Uh, next slide. All right, uh, meeting notice and, uh, proxies on the notice. It needs to be in writing, but email is fine, and that's what we usually use. It must be sent out at least twelve days before the meeting. Uh, that twelve-day period may be waived under certain circumstances, but I can't recall us ever doing that. Uh, proxies, uh, the person that's going to be your proxy must be from the same senatorial district, uh, must be in writing with your signature. A proxy can be such for, uh, just one, uh, absent member. A proxy cannot serve for more than one absent member. Uh, and they have full privileges at SREC meetings. They may attend committee meetings, but not counted for a quorum or allowed to vote. One exception, typically only SREC mem, uh, members can attend officials committee meetings, which I'll talk to, uh, you in a future, uh, presentation that hopefully will be even shorter than this one. Uh, but proxies cannot attend official committee meetings, and you'll understand why when I get to that. Uh, next slide. And the next slide. And by the way, this is the last slide. This is everyone's favorite slide. Uh, I'm moving the bylaws. There's two ways to do it. opposed in writing at prior regular meetings or noticed in the call of the upcoming meeting. Uh, voting approval, there's two ways of doing that as well. Two-thirds vote of members present in voting, or majority of the entire members in person and proxy. Um, that's it for the overview of the bylaws. I'll turn it back over to the chair. If you have any questions, please ask my assistant general counsel, Eric O'Beoah. He's much more knowledgeable and a lot smarter than I am. Thank you very much.
So for the party officers, in case you're wondering, it's kind of like Hotel California. They can check anytime and love to just stay up. Okay, so, uh, the parliamentarian is informing that since the formal business of this meeting is over, we're in the training session that we probably should adjourn, because there's no opposition, we'll adjourn the formal business side of the meeting. Okay, so now we are all, we should have done that actually probably before. Uh, but we really wanted Patrick to talk special. All right, Tom Washington's up. Uh, he's going to give you a quick overview about how we do the finances of the party. Uh, oh, Tom Washington's treasurer.
Thank you very much, Chairman. My name is Tom Washington. I've served as the state party treasurer since, uh, Tom Meckler ascended to, uh, state chair. He was the previous treasurer. I was appointed assistant treasurer by Chairman Ministerie in 2010, shortly after he was elected. Um, I was a elected member of this body from 2010 through 2014, first from SD nine, and then after redistricting from SD twelve. Uh, I'm a CPA, uh, formerly of Arthur Andersen and Cooper's Library, then, um, a CPA since I got my certificate in nineteen eighty-two. I'm happy to, uh, serve the party. I've been a lifelong Republican, but I've been active in the grassroots since nineteen eighty-four. Prepared a, uh, presentation. We have the slides also on the back. I live in, uh, Denton County. I was active in the Denton County party as vice chair for eight years, and, uh, my wife, Billy, and I have two kids. Quite a few less than you have. For, for those, uh, for those members that have been here for quite a while, uh, this is, uh, directed more towards more than new members, and, uh, is going to be on a very basic level to, uh, kind of just give an overview of what, um, our finances look like. Political parties, and, and this includes not only the state party, but, uh, even county parties, they're, they're all under these same rules. We, we have to account for all of our funds into these separate fund types. Funds are either federal, they're either state, or they're corporate. Um, there are no, really no other classifications, although there is a specialty type of, uh, fund that, that I'll go into a little bit later. We have to keep these funds separate by law, so we have to have separate bank accounts. So, uh, we have to have a minimum of three bank accounts. We actually have more than that because we also designate funds by activity. The part that we're regulated by, and it's up there next to the funds, is we're regulated by the Federal Election Commission for our federal funds. For our state, our corporate funds were regulated by the Texas Ethics Commission. Every single transaction we do has to be reported. It doesn't matter if it's three cents or three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we have to report every single transaction. That's a level of accounting that, um, most companies or private concerns don't even have to do. If you look at our reports, you'll see that, uh, they're in amazing detail, and, um, you will see every single transaction that, uh, we transacted. Even on the credit cards, we have to go and every single line item is, is reported on the reports. Next slide. So let's talk about the federal funds. There's a, there's an old saying in these funds that, uh, gold, silver, and bronze, with, with gold being the, the most valuable, the most valuable funds to have are federal funds. How do you get federal funds? Well, well, really, you just tell the donors or the fundraisers when you're raising the funds that they're going to be federal donations. And, uh, by making those disclosures, those funds become federal funds. Federal funds can be used for state activities. Uh, state funds cannot be used for federal. That's why federal is at the top of the chart, gold. We have to report monthly to the Federal Election Commission. And we're subject to donor fundraising limits on the federal funds. In most cases, those limits, uh, I think are up to twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars per donor, um, per year for, for a particular activity. You'll, you'll hear people, you know, contributing a million dollars to this, that, and the other thing. Well, it, it's not federal because the federal funds are regulated. Now, having said that, there are super PACs and other types of entities out there that people can put unlimited donations to, and then those donations can be used in federal elections, but they're not supposed to be coordinated. Uh, if you can see my eyes, I'd be winking right now because there's actually ways to do that that, um, are permitted but, uh, quasi-legal. Next slide. State funds are silver. We report these semi-annually to the Texas Ethics Commission. Our CRC funds, for example, are, are state funds. When we raise CRC funds, we're raising them under the state banner. Uh, our convention funds, uh, when we raise them, we mostly raise those under the federal banner, even though we're raising them at a state convention, because the federal funds are, are more valuable. The, they're not subject to donor fundraising limits. So if someone wants to write us a three hundred thousand dollar check as, uh, state funds, we can take that check. We report, uh, we report these on our GPAC report, so if you're looking for the state funds that go through the party, look for the GPAC report. Next slide. Corporate funds, very valuable, uh, not subject to limits. So if, um, AT&amp;T wants to write us a fifty thousand dollar check, we can take it. But, uh, those funds do have some limits on how we can use those funds. We can use corporate funds for, for a lot of our overhead. We cannot use corporate funds for election activity of, of any kind, but by offsetting some of our overhead with corporate funds, we can release state funds that we might have to use, uh, for the, that overhead, and then those state funds can be used for election activity. So we move, we move the, uh, funds around as, as we have availability. Next slide. Now, we also have designated funds by activity, and these are the activities that we designate funds by. For example, in our state convention, we keep track of federal, state, and corporate funds that are raised and used in connection with the state convention. We do the same thing for victory expenses, candidate resource committee are strictly state funds. And then the special fund that I talked about are funds from the secretary of state for our primary election funds. Those are given to us in trust, and we have to strictly account for those, and they're not really reportable for either of the three reports that go through, um, the Texas Ethics Commission or the... or the, uh, Federal Election Commission, but we do have to commit to the Secretary of State in, in very much detail, down to the penny, how those primary funds are dispersed in accordance with the law, and any funds that are left over that, uh, were not used have to be given back. And so we keep those funds separate. Next slide. Compliance is a big deal, and we have a very dedicated team working on, uh, our compliance, besides myself, we've got Susan McLean, who works, uh, in the RPT office, and really mostly what she does is, is compliance. We use a software called Aristotle, and the Aristotle software is a, uh, very well-recognized software that keeps track of our donors and our donations, and helps us, uh, make sure that we report these in the, in the right funds. Jennifer Stoner is the accounting director for the RPT, so in addition to do all the accounting for the party, she gets involved in all the compliance as well. Jennifer is very hardworking, and if you see Jennifer, uh, just tell her thank you. John Alvey is the second accountant in our office who works as Jennifer's assistant, uh, he's the one that puts together the financial statements for me that, uh, are in your monthly report, are your quarterly reporting package when you come to the SRAC. You'll see that, uh, you get very detailed reporting, uh, since 2010, since we, uh, took over the treasurer. Keith Davis is an attorney, he helps us with all the, uh, legal issues that come up from time to time on reporting these funds, mostly in the, uh, Federal Election Commission veins. And Monte Watkins is a former member of your body, who's a dedicated assistant treasurer, and Monte helps, uh, each and every time we have to put these reports together, and spends a lot of her personal time. We're all, we're all volunteers, um, except for the, uh, RPT staff, of course. We're committed to transparency. But this is, this is something we committed to in, in 2010 when we took office with Steve Munisteri, it hasn't changed. Uh, we came up with a detailed reporting format that we think gives a broad, not, not a broad, but a very detailed view on what happens in each one of these funds, and how it's categorized. And we're, we're committed to making sure this body knows how the funds of the RPT are spent, and every time we issue a report, a compliance reporting link is sent out by John Alvey to every member of the SRAC. If you're not getting, uh, emails from him on these reporting links, please let us know, uh, especially to the new, new members that have been added. I'm a CPA, as I mentioned before, and CPAs are all about transparent reporting. Thank you very much for your attention.
Pretty exciting stuff, right? Somebody's thinking that's as exciting as watching the paint dry, probably, but that's what, uh, enables this party to function, so, uh...